Bryce.
Here.
Hayden.
Present.
MacArthur.
Here.
McAvinci.
Present.
Nigelle.
Here.
Olson, we're waiting on. Palsin, we're waiting on, but we do have more.
All right. So, let's look at the, uh... Anyone have any additions or other changes to this tonight's agenda? I don't.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented. Support?
That answers my question. So, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So then, our minutes from the last meeting. I assume everyone has looked through here for errors. Never will find errors. And then, we'll listen. And I looked through it and I found what the...
I make motion to approve the amendments. Sorry.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. So... We have... Second here for public comments. Any item? I believe. Do they have any public comments? No.
I think that's just you two.
You're not. Well, our meeting is. Well, not really. So... No public comments. All right. That was easy. Chairperson comments?
Well, he's not here, so...
That's you.
Well, to live in.
I guess. So, just a couple of things. Let's see. We have on Granger Road, one of my friends and neighbors has asked that we take one of those portable radar signs and put it up on Granger Road where people come... On the north side of Granger Road, which is in the village. Where people come off of Kent Road at about fifty-something miles per hour. And then, those that have pickup trucks and other vehicles, they don't care about driving through the potholes there. They just don't slow down and keep going. She suggested we put one of those up just for a while to slow people down maybe. So that's one idea. And I don't know who we need to talk to about that. Do you know this?
Uh, well, I don't know if we would have to contact the road commission because we don't maintain that road at all, so I don't know if we need their permission to put one of our own radar signs out there. I can make a phone call.
If we ask them, it probably won't happen.
Well, but if we say we're putting our own sign out there, that might make a difference.
On their poll, we have to be sure.
Right.
Oh, yeah. They'd say, "Sure, go ahead."
Right.
So, yeah, if we can schedule that in sometime, just give it a try because, you know, I walk there every single day, usually twice a day with my dog. Sometimes we have to leap for the ditch. Cars go by very fast. So I agree with my neighbor. That's one thing.
Thank you, Les, for coming. I also will be hearing from the former village manager at the end of the week, so I can probably ask him to...
Sure.
Think I know.
There was another thing, but it escapes me at the moment. So, any other items from other commissioners? Who wants to go first? Melon?
I have none, but thank you.
Okay. Then we'll go around the table then.
Um, I guess update from council continues to peruse the master plan at a leisurely place. And there will be a special meeting for hopefully final review on that and... I'm sorry, a workshop.
Oh.
Oh.
Why is there going to be another workshop?
Yeah, what's that?
Um, some of the council members feel they have not had enough time to read that and would like to do that.
How many workshops have been devoted to the master plan?
Three.
Three?
Three, so far.
Yeah, I was at the first one. I'm glad you turned the room around here so that visitors are over here.
Oh, good. That was great idea.
So, is there ever going to be a cap on how many master plan workshops and/or revisions and/or meetings, special meetings that... I mean, this is just a lot of money. It's fifty bucks a person council-wise. I'm not yelling at you.
No, I understand.
But is there ever going to be a, "We have to stop this" kind of thing?
Um, that I know of, there is not. Could there, should there be? Possibly. But there is not... I don't know if you could.
Okay.
Um, because I think it would depend on circumstances, but I think it's a good idea to keep in mind spending residents' money versus doing it at home.
Only council can pass it where they have a majority that says we're going to cap it.
Because basically what you're saying is it's going to be a workshop because they haven't read it yet. I don't think we should be spending money because they haven't taken the time to read it. I think it's awful.
I hope that the citizens out there in the community notice that because not all of us are asking for more workshops because we haven't read it. Some of us recognize that, hey, all of the changes were already covered at the previous workshop. There has been no new changes, so why do we need an additional workshop to cover...
Can I ask who requested that workshop?
Dan.
Dan Ashman?
Dan is the main person who's expressed concerns about not having enough time.
Okay, and you guys got this in March or April?
And I did remind council that that is something that we, you know, when we are elected, we are elected to read things and to be prepared for the meetings. But they feel not comfortable and not prepared to make decisions, so they would like to have another workshop. So, we continue to try to progress forward and meet the goals of what our visions are, and that is to complete this as a group and get this...
And we have also tried to remind them that if they are making revisions that are simply minor questions... To formatting or something like that that do not change the content in any appreciable way, it still costs us extra money for McKenna to also make those changes because McKenna will turn these for these changes too. So, we've been trying to say, "Look, you know, at some point we have to..."
And that's my question. When is the... Have you... Are we ever going to decide to, you know, come, I don't know, December? Will anybody decide?
As Tony said, that's really up to the majority of the council to decide that, yes, they will approve it. So until we can get them to form the council to approve it.
Well, and also there is a fire. If it is not approved and the recreation plan cannot be completed in a timely manner, a deadline comes and we do not meet the requirements for DNR grants and we cannot apply because we do not have our Parks and Rock Master Plan.
Correct.
In line, which means we would, you know, be at the loss of opportunities for a lot of money.
But when is that, um, DNR, when is that deadline?
February.
February first.
February, yeah, start at first, okay.
Hope it's done fully.
The Parks and Rock Master Plan has to be done by done, which means the master plan has to be completed so the parks and rocks can begin, so that can be completed, so...
But I'm not even sure that... Never mind. I did talk with Wayne Wills this weekend and he said that there are grants available that are waiting to be applied for, for our village that... Because you have to have a finished master plan in place. And as long as the master plan sits there, isn't approved, then the grants are not available to us.
And we'll watch the water.
That's another thing.
So... And then is a cautious decision being made and, you know, there's nothing you can do with this one?
And I'll just point out one thing that is obvious from this past year is that master plan, two years, that regardless of what it says in the master plan, apparently there's some people in the village council that don't follow it. So, it's kind of like a exercise in futility in a way. Okay, that's all I'm saying.
I think in a big way.
Well, I think that's one of the goals when they're doing meetings is reminding everybody, keeping things to the surface that we can all discuss and under and keep it forward.
And the same applies to the recreation master plan. Just ignore parts of it.
It is a good basis, however, if you find yourself in a position where you are sued over the ordinance that you have, your master plan should have and typically would have the tools to deal with a lawsuit issue relative to the zoning part. So, it has multiple purposes. One is to give you direction, but the other is to help you if somebody wants to go a different direction than the master plan is laid out to go, so...
Meet somebody other than the village council?
Correct.
And keep in mind that the...
Let's say somebody wanted to take and have a parcel rezoned to something they wanted it to be, but it's not zoned that way now and it's not proposed to be zoned that way in the future. Without an approved master plan, you have a very tough time fighting that issue through the court process if your master plan isn't within the last five years, which is the state law requires that to be done in a five-year cycle.
If I could just point out before we get off track, the master plan is on the agenda unfinished, so if you want to have a discussion.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Sorry about that.
As long as that paper's fine.
Nothing that this group can fix. I'm good.
I thought you were going to follow the whole scroll out.
Yeah, I will.
I have a rest in the Parks and Rock Plan.
And I know Pat George has been starting to work on a committee, I believe, that has already started to work on that with Brandon Township. I did suggest that it would be a good idea to maybe include somebody from planning commission. I suggested you, with your background and experience, that you'd be a good person to be on there. And you thought that was a good idea. I don't know if Mr. George contacted you yet or not, but, you know, I will remind him about that and see if we can try to get you involved on that because I think that would be a good fit to help out with guiding the development of the Parks and Rock Plan.
I'd certainly be interested in that. Okay.
I would just like to apologize for being late. I, we were sitting there watching the storm come in and the hail and everything, and then we were watching the second storm come in and I knew I was coming today and then I completely panicked. I just would like to apologize. I am sorry for...
I was just hoping the first storm would get done before I had to.
It was phenomenal. It was amazing to watch it come through, that's all.
Cool. You just see my yard where I had all the bare dirt from, then I tried to level out after it, but it didn't well and now it's all going, oh.
Oh, yeah, make sure, yeah. Yeah, so... But I apologize.
All good.
All right. Very good. Thank you. So we have new business. Plan review of Forest South Street MSU credit.
Are we doing that?
Plan review, South Street MSU credit. And I think that has something to do with this, though.
They left us the, that's the way to review.
Yeah, but they, they said something...
We came in in February.
Yeah.
And...
I think all they did was warn us that it was coming up.
Well, it was determined in February that we didn't have to. We had a design revision from that plan and Liz suggested that we come. So I think we've almost gone back to the original, other than some curbs. So at one point we're going to remove the dry sand. We started that we have our wellhead, we have to affect that.
Oh, yes.
So I was wondering, in this case, is this going to be a dual-use space?
Yes. More curb use area.
So, was you talking about the landscape there in that...
The one that's along the side of the adjacent building.
That's curious. Is that all, is this going to be just grass or...
Well, it looks like they're going to put an enclosure for a dumpster.
Do we want him to speak first?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be great.
There will be a couple of small trees and bushes, mostly low lying from a security standpoint, we're allowing it to be too large. But it will not just be grass.
So the building's staying there?
Building's staying there. We're taking off the wood siding, exposing the old brick for the restore.
That will look way better. And I've checked the, so the enclosure is six foot for the dumpsters. I'm still wasn't sure, did we agree that it's six foot for dumpsters?
That was another add since February.
Oh, okay.
We were sharing a dumpster with the harbor store.
Oh, okay.
And that's no longer an option.
Gotcha. We'll have the fencing around that. So, like, do you want to just tell us? I think we had a question about the dumpsters.
I think, uh, Mr. Dennett's name is next to this item. Do you have things to add or track from it?
Look at the plan, it appears to be very good. Matter of fact, I agree with Mr. Aitman that a little green space on top would actually be added feature, a nice feature of the area. So it's right in that area, everything's blacktop or tattered.
Who will be checking your, what type of plants or shrubs or trees or plant that are there?
Yeah, we do have landscaping within the ordinance and I'll check to make sure that what they propose means the...
I'm sure it's, like you said, low lying, but it does make a difference on some of those.
Right.
And the other thing, the ATM, there's not going to be one in the vest to do a loan.
Correct.
And the ATM is, uh, will be outside, it's the I...
ITM.
ITM.
ITM, yes.
So then, is there walking space? Is that a sidewalk where those of us that don't drive into the village can walk up to the ATM?
You would be walking up through the driveway. You'd be fighting traffic.
And how big is that walkway?
Where's the tunnel?
The driveline?
Right here, this?
Yeah.
This is the walkway?
Well, no, it's just the driveway and a walkway.
Okay.
It's nine and a half feet.
It's a...
The one side, the other side is eight, eight point eight?
Eight point eight is about as tight as we can get now with keeping the existing columns.
It just looked like there was a real narrow space and anybody was actually going to try to get to that ATM on foot. They would have to actually be in the...
The driveway.
Correct. It's a six-inch curb adjacent to the building. And that's part of the requirements of the ATM, so you can reach it from your car.
But that is the appropriate way to do it, by foot, is to walk through that as well?
Unofficially, I would say yes.
It's just like going up to drive a window at a fast food restaurant.
You know, you're not legally allowed to do that.
There's no place to, uh, walk without getting on over.
But you're not legally allowed to walk through a, drive through, such a poor order.
But you know, you know how many people walk into that vest to do all the things in the ATM?
Yeah, all the time.
All the time.
So, yes, so this actually...
So that's the final plan?
Probably nothing.
Yes. There's a location.
But then we do it here.
Yes.
I know.
Interactive.
I just, when I seen that, it was...
There's a, you have the option of speaking to somebody.
I see.
As a, on a camera.
ITM night drop.
Night drop is the separate piece.
I know a lot of banks, they don't have necessarily an actual ATM.
But I think, I think it is when it's inside of a small village. Outside, you chase and those, you know, there's nobody that walks up there probably anyways.
Right.
But typically, the one here in town...
They walk that way.
There's a lot of walk traffic that goes in there, but again, that's just a convenience thing.
I think in any town, even downtown Rochester, everybody walks to the bank. Everybody walks downtown. Bynum walks to the bank twice a week every week. I can't imagine taking away a way to walk to, I mean, that takes away the people.
Having a plan that the bank has already done the study on, though, how much that gets you personally, the items that are available?
Oh, I'm sure.
I would say that this is one of their lower-volume branches.
If I'm wrong, but I don't think they do that. Because they don't have it available or not, they're not doing the vest to do order anyway.
They'll just have to watch the hours that you're on.
I also invited Matt Jenkins from our DVA here. Much like September Fest, I think either you or Paul from Granger stopped in and talked to Fred today.
Okay, that would be Paul.
Paul, okay. There is a DVA event that happens in October that I don't know if the construction's going to impact.
We will, uh, we'll work with you and make sure that we start in that area or finish in that area.
My understanding of that conversation that took place is even if they're not, they will back off from the parking spaces so they're available for that event.
Okay.
But they will still have to keep some type, if they're still working it, they're going to have to keep some type of temporary barricading for safety reasons.
Correct. And nothing anchors in place, it's disposable.
Okay.
And we want to be good members of the community.
That's what I understand how come that meeting was.
When are you starting then, or you said?
Our plan is August 19.
Okay.
And it'll be closed, the branch will be closed completely for eight weeks.
Okay.
That's our current plan.
That's pretty...
And then the goal is to be finished after eight weeks? Is the goal to be finished after eight weeks?
Uh, yes, other than some punchless work. Yeah. We tried to look at several different options for basing it and none of them really worked all that well to maintain security.
The fence is wide, so it's going to exist.
Correct.
And that's why it's only eight foot nine inch.
That was about as wide as we could get it maintaining distant columns from the canopy.
And you're well within that area of confusion, right?
Correct. It's on the, would be the lower left-hand corner.
Right. So that's pretty hard to move at this point in time.
Correct.
Because typically bypass only do a little bit wider than that under most circumstances. Now, I know the ordinance here and the village doesn't address a minimum width from many other ordinances do, but again, eight foot nine is tight. I don't know that our department's able to decide that. But I guess that they're going to want some local parking environment to tie into specifically down through that bypass area, so I don't see them on this plan. Do you know if that's in the works to make sure that they are?
Or whatever signage we have to.
Okay. We got that on tape now.
So this will go, this will go in the fire department before it goes to council?
Yeah, I have another one coming this quick because I typically don't attend these meetings now, it's usually done with the village manager. So I am here to, can I just kind of explain this? But most, and especially with the town, every site plan that comes into Township goes to the fire chief. And I've been thinking about it, this one would have gone there previously too. And it will before I actually issue the permit. Because he'll have comments, I'm sure. And I'll condition those upon... Yeah, I'll condition those upon the fire department's comments. So I don't know if there's a knock box on this building, but there will be before it's all over and that kind of thing, so...
I believe there is on the Mill Street entrance.
That's all the things that the chief and I will work out in the permitting process.
We're planning to submit drawings early next week.
Good. Have you gone over the landscape area and have you checked it relative to what the ordinance requires for plantings or not yet?
Not yet.
Okay. Will that be before it's coming at the same time frame, please?
It will be.
So is the canopy going away altogether?
No, that was, uh, in February, our plans that we had and we came and visited this group.
Right.
The plan is very similar to what we have today with the exception of the landscape area and the dumpster enclosure.
Okay.
Since that meeting, the owner wanted to look into completely getting rid of the canopy and that's when Liz and I spoke and she said that we really needed to come in for a cycling approval since we're drastically changing the building. There have been subsequent design meetings and the canopy is now remaining.
Oh. I don't think that's all bad since that you walk up to the ATM machine now.
Sure. We were going to have a...
And inside, but at least you'd be out of the ring.
We were going to have a narrower canopy to cover the people and the vehicles.
Okay.
It just seemed to be throwing a lot of money after something that wasn't really what we wanted. Why are we getting rid of something that's there?
Yeah.
Understood. Sometimes ideas work out.
Do we normally, that's what I'm new with these first ones and pet drawings of it. Typically, do we get them before they go to the fire department for the landscape?
Typically not. But this one I wasn't at tab of and the person I believe that was no longer employed. So, yeah, normal, normally it would come in, I would review it, the fire chief would review, we'd put our comments together. In many cases, depending on what the issues are, most of the other communities I work in actually forward it to their planner for review. But this didn't quite fit that program. It wasn't that extensive enough or that type of expenditure. But typically, the chief and I both get to review these before it comes here.
Right.
This one was kind of, does it go or doesn't it go is, you know, wasn't really extensive but enough that the planning commission needed to be involved. If you recall, a number of years ago, we modified the ordinance that allowed me to do administrative review and inform the planning commission of what happened on smaller projects. This was one of those that could have gone either way, but because of what is happening, I don't know the best, they come to the planning commission.
So what is the next step? Does the planning commission recommend this to the village council? I know you said it goes to the fire chief. Does council have...
Actually, council doesn't have any...
I didn't think so.
...input into this.
Okay.
By ordinance, it's the planning commission group's site plan.
So should our recommendation be based on taking it to the fire department for review?
No, I will do that anyway.
Okay. All right.
So what good is it if it's on service?
I don't know if you wanted it in writing, that's all. Okay.
Well, we do need a motion though, right?
We need a motion to do something for that.
Based on approval of.
I'm going to make a motion.
Wait, wait.
Condition. I just have a couple of questions. You mentioned restoring the brick.
Yes.
What efforts have been taken to, what preservation efforts have been taken to restore the building? I saw the renderings and they're very, I'll use the term cancel, I mean rendering on the new building. However, that entrance is not, can't say for sure, but I'm pretty certain it's not restoring the original facade entrance. So I'm just curious as to what preservation efforts have been taken. Do you have pictures of the original building, anything like that?
No. We've looked, we've, uh, we did take a walk around and noticed that there is existing brick sticking out below the plywood and we're very confident based on the thickness of the wall that that was scattered on top of the existing brick. So as we gently tape off the wood panel, we'll be restoring mortar and our bricks that are available to match as they're, as best as we can.
And unfortunately, I'm coming into this late in the game and so certainly I'm not setting expectations, but we, as a Main Street Oakland County community, we have access to a historic preservationist and a preservation architect. Had I come in earlier on, they would have been available for me, for sure. And if that's something of interest to you, they've already indicated to me by email that they're standing by.
Okay. While the building is old, I don't think it's really considered historic by any means. Doesn't seem to have a whole lot of historic significance.
I bet it depends on who you ask on the street here.
I'm sure.
Amen.
Sit down with Rob.
Respect a Genesee merchant.
Yes, and I, and I looked at some of the...
I'm going to do a picture of this now.
Yes, and I, and I looked at some of the standards you were basing your plans off of, and certainly it doesn't, it wouldn't, the expectation would be there for the exterior, the interiors preservation standards. But we just, we're always looking at the buildings thinking, how can we get back to their original facade?
Sure. And that's what we're trying to do and also maintain their brand, right, as a, that's in the entry is, is what they've, is what we've come up with as a team.
Well, I can add this, is that looking in our master plan, that thing is not shown as one of the ones that was noted on the historic preservation survey.
It's not in there, I just tried to find it. It's the start.
There's something right there, is that it's not as historic as some of the other buildings.
I was just looking through that too, Larry, cause I thought, I don't know what it originally, originally looked like.
I think at least restoring it to the original brick would definitely be a step backwards, making it fit more with the other historic buildings in the area. I think that I like the idea of seeing it restored to the original brick. The other thing I liked is seeing in the plan that they have a big window, a big window area there, which I like that.
We believe that's what was there.
Yeah, because I think that also enhances the character of downtown, they have, they always have, you know, shots that have window areas and stuff. Because it just looks more like a bright and downtown area as opposed to completely bricked off, as odds where there's no visible windows. So I think in general, I think that the aesthetics of the building will fit in. And if there's no historical records, they're. So, any more comment or may I make?
Bill, anything else?
I know Bill suggested that it's under the condition of a fire chamber view.
Yes, I didn't get, I was gonna-
I'm just letting you know, because we were discussing.
I make a motion to approve the site plan as presented pending the approval of the fire chief.
Support.
Have you generally thought on that? I know you've been on the other side of the table.
I was just gonna add the building inspector in there, but that's, as long as the fire-
He's gotta get a permit from me, so he doesn't, you know, he doesn't know about that.
Doesn't get to that.
I know you've been on that side of the table, I didn't know if there's something that-
No, that's mine.
Yeah, the indication from the applicant that they will be making sure that the rebuilt area needs the landscape part of our own.
Okay, you want me to amend?
Does that follow?
They would add that in, that could be fine.
So I made a motion to amend my motion to add, also with the understanding that the greenbelt area will be in compliance with the relevant ordinances, is that good enough?
That's good.
Okay.
Support.
Second.
Okay, so, on the favor, wait, wait till Liz is ready.
I was gonna say, would you mind reading that back?
Who was my support?
We don't care.
I think Noni supported the original.
The first one, Patty second.
Patty supported the amendment.
Just do Noni also, it'll be fine.
Oh, good.
Motion by Hayden, seconded by Nigveld, to approve the site plan as presented pending approval of fire chief, with the understanding the greenbelt area will be in compliance with existing ordinances.
That's good.
Would you wanna roll call on that?
Nope, don't need one.
It's not money.
Would it be?
I don't think so. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post.
May I make a suggestion to, oh, I gotta speak to the chair.
Yes, sir.
What I, I would like to make a suggestion that one of these plans be signed by yourself as the approved site plan pending tonight's meeting. The reason I bring this up is that local community across the street, we had numerous site plans and we don't know which one was really the approved set. So I wanna make sure that our bookkeeper here stays accurately.
We've sent a digital copy to Liz.
Pardon me?
We've sent a digital copy to Liz.
You sent a digital copy to me?
Yeah.
Where did you sign it?
We'll do a full set, I just want one of those got the chairman's approval date.
Date, yeah, absolutely.
As the set that was approved at this meeting. So thank you for that.
Especially with the-
Did you send it?
Yes, it would've been for me.
Like, you opened it, you just didn't open the attachment, that's all.
Thank you, very nice, complete, thorough plan, thank you.
These are very nice.
They were ready to submit for construction, so they should be completed this morning.
I make a suggestion, do a little bit more in your code analysis before you hand it to me or have-
Of course, there's a whole code compliance sheet.
Excellent.
Yes.
That makes the planning group go a lot faster for you.
I reviewed that myself this morning. All the sections, the travel distances, document loads.
It'll expedite my review if you've already done all the work.
I don't know. I don't have it.
Okay, I will, I'll get you another copy.
Thank you.
I'll make sure you get a copy.
Do you want this copy loser?
Got a bunch here. Stand mine.
No.
Okay, we have a joint collaboration meeting.
Yes, exciting time.
To decide on?
Yeah.
Thank you.
To decide on a joint collaboration meeting, checking up, I believe that would, the planning commission, the DDA, village council, is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
That will be on Monday, July 29th at 7:00 PM. That will be at the Old Town Hall.
Thanks, Matt.
Did we check and make sure Old Town Hall's available?
No, we did not.
What time?
We can go to Senior Center, Old Town.
What time?
So can you?
I will not be there.
You can, you can have it by now?
Yeah.
That's the one that-
Oh, you're on both?
Yeah.
That's right, because I was gonna say, most people said the 29th, so that's why. Yes, and with that-
Old Town Hall is available.
The Old Town Hall is available.
On the 29th or?
Monday, July 29th, 7:00 PM. And so that gives us the opportunity to take the DDA budget, which is completed and approved, the village council budget, which is completed and approved, and begin our July new fiscal year, 1920, and take our latest, 20, 1920.
Oh, 1920 to 20, gotcha.
I'm like, wait a minute, there are no yet. And then, um-
Cross our fingers.
Use our draft master plan. Well, we'll have our draft, it can't be approved because of 63 days. So, we'll have our draft master plan.
Well, I mean, you have to count at least.
Well, we have a draft right now, we'll work with whatever we have available. And just kind of think, if you don't mind in your head, visions, ideas, projects, that you think you'd like to see. Not necessarily, you know, what its budget's gonna be once it's not laid out, just what do you think is a good plan? If you remember correctly, at the joint, very first joint meeting, when we were at the library, we talked about what each table thought was important and drew the fabulous little diagram of what is concentric circles. We're going to, those concentric circles, and we're going to revisit that, see if that's still the case and start from there. So just with that in the back of your head, what sounds good, what would you like to see?
And then, there were personal things that everybody was allowed to hand into when we did the, we had to do write-ups and whatnot.
At the, for the master plan?
Are they still here?
That's with the master plan, yeah.
But those are the ideas, like if I was to submit something, that's what I would submit to.
Well, then let's just say, hey, can we have a copy of that you'd like to have it here, we won't be here, right?
Um, sure, do we have those here? Do we have those here?
Um, I can check and see, I do, so, yeah, I have a whole master plan file, it's probably in there.
Okay. Okay, cool. Okay.
So that's what your suggestions would like to be, because I was gonna say, since you can't be here, which I was gonna send an email out, whoever can't be here, send something that you have in your head and you'd like to see from that point. And like I said, this is just a simple throwing out of ideas, then comes, you know, obviously the money after that, but-
On any particular subjects or what?
Just what you wanna see?
No, just what you would like to see, like I said, we kind of have a base from last year, but what does it look like this year? Last year was the sidewalks, the drains, the communication, that was-
For anything to do with the village, you mean?
Sure.
Or for the master plan?
No, we're not just discussing, the master plan is kind of a guidance for the next steps. The budget's a guidance for the next steps, but what are our next steps? Now we have money, now we have a plan, what are we gonna do with it? We don't have money, but let's pretend we have money, what are we gonna do with it?
Well, that's what you do, is you come up with a capital improvement plan that helps you.
Well, we have that.
Yeah.
Put the money into places.
It's not that we, it's not that we don't have any money, it's just that we have very limited money, so we have to prioritize.
We're the big creator.
What's the most important things that we wanna start on with the money that we have available now?
But this step is, what would you like to see?
Right.
Not what we'll see, just what would you like to see, so anyways, that's where we are.
And that's what I'm saying, we go back to those, we don't have to ream at the wheel because we've all done that already.
Sounds good.
And I think this is important that we continue with these meetings, because I think if, what we really need to do as a community, I've said this, this is one of the reasons I ran for council, is that I really think that what we need to do as a community is try to get our different boards to come together and collaborate more like a team, all together for the community as opposed to being at odds and going in different directions. So I think that coming together and finding out where we have in agreement and where we can start collaborating and building that trust between the different groups is really important, because ultimately, we wanna do that for our community.
Exactly, and when we all have like vision ahead and we can all work on it together, that's a good step. So that's it, we hope to see you, and if we can't see you, please represent with an idea, thought, email, note, something, if you feel need. I'll do the next.
Okay, so unfinished business, master plan draft review, what does that really mean at this time? I have no idea.
Doesn't matter, because they're gonna do a workshop.
You're not required to do anything with that, it's just unfinished business, so. Stays. Stays until it's finished.
I think that there was a few minor changes to maps and things, but they did get those mapped and that, yes.
But yes, and I still have to-
Yeah.
We got wood roots, any correct?
FYI, I don't think I've mentioned this to everybody, the maps are, a couple of the maps are still incorrect because trails have not been changed over to pathways, and I have to contact McKenna for that. And that was one of the holdups.
And that was clearly stated that that was supposed to be done, right?
Correct.
So it's McKenna's fault that they didn't?
No, it was not, no, it was not clearly stated to McKenna.
Oh.
It was clearly stated to me, who did not update McKenna.
Okay, I would just wanna clarify, if McKenna was supposed to, was there, was supposed to have gotten, taken those notes and made those changes.
That was my fault.
One of the many changes, and we'll get that, good.
I take full responsibility for that. But I would like to point out, I am the one who caught that Edward Street had been incorrect for the last two master plans.
Good job, Jay.
Was it once named so it else?
Edwards, it was Edwards, right? But it has always been listed as Edwards Street and it's Edwards.
I mean, the thing, the only thing, and I know that it's worth spending money on to fix, but I was a little bit disappointed on the acknowledgements. To notice that, you know, all of the titles are different. Some of them are bolded, some of them are not, some of them are italicized, some of them are not.
We asked for that to be fixed, and she was saying that.
Yeah, we already worked through that.
You know, it's still, it's like all over the board on the way to cover it. But I don't wanna spend extra money to correct that, if McKenna says that it's gonna cost a lot.
So how much did that plan cost?
Oh, we're not done yet.
It's, it's-
It's still going, but-
They're ticking up the price right now.
We are over budget, yes.
How high is that, I guess?
I don't know, I, we're not done yet.
Over budget, do you know, remember, never mind, that's fine.
No, I don't, 20, 20, 24, 28, 28? No, it was more than that.
Can you look at the map?
It was budgeted over the course of two fiscal years.
Look at how yours is spelled.
Sure.
Because I think it's misspelled.
Okay.
I know they were chastised by the village council meeting, but I would hope at some point that the planning commission would just at least send them a note or something, how pitiful. I mean, I'm not very good with putting things together sometimes with my primitive knowledge of the printed word,
Yes, it is.
but my goodness, it was pitiful. Pretty much any of it.
How do you do that? Crescent port is, yeah.
Okay.
Crescent hill is not correctly spelled.
Yeah, but crescent port is, which is-
Right, but then on one map crescent is right and crescent isn't right. Okay, do you want us to send you the, like the, what little tweets we found? You want me to email it to you? Let's do that, I'm gonna do that, because I found a couple other things and I gave it to, but I'll send you and I'll copy you.
That would be great.
Okay.
Some of the, yeah.
Because I'm still trying to figure out what you said.
That's okay, no, 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 all good.
Oh, I see what you circled, no, I need to know what you circled, I get it.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're making some corrections and they also correct the formatting on the titles on the acknowledgements.
And then I'll just send you that instead of wasting time.
I've already got that, the maps, the acknowledgement page. McCarthy's suggestion, a note or letter.
But didn't they ask them when she was sitting right there?
I mean, are you happy with the way that the plan that he was presenting?
And she sat with myself and Bill for two and a half hours a day, and I spent 45 minutes with her.
I mean, are you happy with the plan that he was presenting with?
Okay, so that's not on us.
McKenna in the corrections, I mean, it was like-
Not at all.
I, I, I've been stating throughout this process that I've been disappointed with the professionalism of McKenna as a company, because I dealt with them the last iteration of the master plan, and they were much, they were much more professional, did a much better job.
But that's here and there, we need to just finish and move forward and we chose to go with them and-
No, absolutely, but we don't make, make no, there's a lot of planning permission.
But at the end of this, I'm with you.
Well, we know we won't be.
But we need to put it on record, and I'm with you, but.
One person talk any time, please, and go off your stuff.
I'm done.
All right, then, then, Tony, you start.
I'm good.
Go ahead, you did.
Would the chair acknowledge Liz, please?
Absolutely, hi Liz.
The sun's out, yay!
Okay. But we're in here.
Well, let's give them one, okay, sun's out.
Mel, do you have anything to add to whatever it was you were?
Just saying, we're sending some changes.
Okay, so I have a question, what are we supposed to be doing with reviewing this master plan?
I just provided a copy to you guys, that is the, should have all of the edits, that should be like a clean copy of your changes, council's changes. And so, since it was provided to council, I didn't feel like right providing them a copy and not giving you guys a copy. So, so it's the latest.
Yes, the greatest.
So what are we allowed to do with this?
You can do whatever you want with it.
Before we-
I was suggesting, but when they were good.
Before we get to the joint meeting.
That's not very nice.
Or, it's a question. There's gonna be another, at some point, another village council workshop on this master plan. Are we allowed to come there and bring anything we want to, uh?
Of course, it's a public meeting.
There will be, there will be public comments, yes.
Are you serious? It's an open meeting, it's a public meeting, yes. And I don't know how the rest of the other council feels, but from my perspective as a council member, I think if we had planning commissioners there and we had any questions, I would certainly invite comments from the planning commissioners if there was some. But, you know, like I said, I don't know how the other council members would do it, but I would certainly entertain it.
Wow, so you just gave that wonderful sermon on how all the groups work together and blah blah blah.
Yeah, that's right.
So if the planning commission came there, they should certainly do that if you want everyone to be collaborative.
I agree, that's what I said, I would certainly add the end there. I will say this, is that at one of those workshops, I did see Rick and some folks there, and it was nice having some other people there.
One, that was me.
I would've been there, but Rick blacked me out.
That was, I must say, that was an extremely frustrating experience.
We did pay Rick to do that.
Extremely frustrating experience for me, because there was no opportunity, very little opportunity to comment on some of the things that were being said, hacked up on his plan, but anyway, hopefully it'll be better than that.
We'll see.
We'll see. All right, anything else about the master plan, wanna talk, anybody wanna talk about the master plan?
Yeah.
I think we have.
We have, we're good.
But.
All right.
I think we've done our part, so we're just waiting for council to wrap up. I think we've done our part, so we're just waiting for council to wrap up.
CIP, because I do not.
You have anything about the CIP today?
It has not changed.
Okay, that's what it was.
Correct. Um, Bill, you know, worked up her left and that's the latest copy we made.
I think one thing I would like to focus on CIP is I think that we need to consider updating it to include the estimated cost of the Crossman Park Drain Project because that's gonna be a very significant cost. Uh, I think the estimates are somewhere over a hundred thousand dollars now. So that obviously is gonna be a major project that we have to account for in our budget. So I think that needs to be somehow added or incorporated into our capital, into the capital improvement plan.
Is the home on the corner, because I always see the water draining out here to church. Is that also draining into the park? Or going into Hamilton's?
I know, yes, and I'm asked about that drain quite often because that is dangerous on church street in the winter.
Where all is that draining? Okay, no, but it's gushing.
They. It's a, what do you call it, not a flowing, is it a flowing well? Is that the?
It's a sump pump.
Artesian, here?
The one on the corner?
On the corner mill in church?
Right, I think that the sump pump runs all the time.
Constantly.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if it's a flowing well also, but I know there for the longest time was a sump pump that just kept pumping it out.
And then, and it turns to ice every winter on that corner.
That shouldn't be.
And I have slid through that corner more than once.
Yeah, sump pump, there's an issue if the sump pump goes constantly.
So basically, it's like a full basement and have you been in there? It's got like a full basin in it. One on the corner, yeah, that's why there's water out there all the time.
So you're allowed to hook your sump pump up to the public drains?
Well, I don't think he's fucked up to it, it's just known.
No, it's just sitting, it's sitting next to the house, you'll see it, right next to the house comes out.
There's a pipe that comes out and it goes right down the driveway, right in the church.
The water does.
It gushes, it just gushes all day long.
So he pumps it out on his property and then it flows out.
Down the driveway and the church.
But there's a lot of sump pumps connected to the public drain.
I don't see it gushing like this one.
But they're in underneath.
Correct, they're connected correctly, but.
Yeah.
Is there a drain there?
It just comes out the side of the house.
No, no, I mean, is there a drain in the road?
Ah, church.
It's around the corner, I think it's around the corner.
The mill stream has it, right.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Well, it's also front of the mill stream too.
Well, no, his driveway, here's Mill and here's South, his driveway's here.
No, no, there's. It's gone like that, I can't, I can't tell you how many years, it goes back well before me retiring, so that's, that's ten years, so.
The church.
Does it say it's been there eight years or something?
And it just, gone like that for the longest time. I don't know how long it's been vacant, but it was vacant before I retired. Needs to be tore down.
Well, she's, I've been at least selling it to a relative.
Not much you can do about that, I know, I know there's not much you can do about that.
Well, it's my understanding, tell me, Bill, is, I did not look into it. It's my understanding that basically you keep your water maintained on your property. If it's going to Seaman's property, is that not a concern?
Uh, actually, the way it was approved, it has to follow the natural drainage course. So it would go to either some type of a drain or it goes out to the public way. The public way typically has a way for it to drain somewhere. The problem is, is that if you don't have a public way drainage and it's gonna place a drain there, it's sad.
Yeah, because it's around the corner.
Many communities have ordinances that require if you have access to a storm system. Many communities have ordinances that require that you hook into your sump pump to that county drain.
So is that something that maybe we should consider?
I could do a little research on your ordinance, see if your ordinance is there. I mean, if you said there are a number of people here that already are hooked into it. Was it, was that by choice or was that by?
So that, and I can tell you, speaking for myself, it was so that you're not doing what this person is doing.
That person's done, well, yeah, but is it by ordinance that that took place or is it by?
I shouldn't even have said nothing because I've been doing that for an awful long time.
Well, that's right, you can do that, okay? You can't run into a public system, but you can run into a public drain system. But if you, if, if it's mandatory, then you do have to hook into it.
I don't think it is, mine used to go right out on the ground until I.
So it was by choice you hooked into it?
Correct.
Okay.
I should have been.
Without order, it should be mandatory that they happen.
And that's what I was wondering, it was.
So can I ask the rest of commissioners, do you think it's worthwhile for build them to investigate that and bring that back to what's existing?
This has been out off the table year after year.
But here's the problem, it's not just the ice that's the issue. When you pump that water back out into the road, that starts deteriorating the road.
It's deteriorating the road net area.
The sidewalk, the road.
Yeah, the sidewalk, the sidewalks kind of uplift it.
Yeah, that's one of the things that we're dealing about in our community is drainage issues causing deteriorating roads.
Because after I wash my truck or car, when I'm coming down, I go all around it.
You know to avoid it.
And the sidewalk has that film on it, which is slippery. And if, you know, the kids are running down there, you're watching them slip and fall, the bikes are slipping.
Then that way for.
So you're saying that it normally, the normal way to do it, like what Bob has done is connect it underground to the storm drain.
It'll bring it once in one.
Correct.
Not overlay.
You still have an overflow capacity at the house itself. In other words, when you bring it out, you put it in to either have an overflow neck on it or have a air gap. And you do that because if that pipe that's going underground happens to freeze, then it won't pump the water out and you're gonna end up with it in your basement, so it's a stock gap. I mean, it makes it so that you could pump it out, but out of the basement. And that still allows it to do that without backflowing into it, okay? Then you go out and you either jet the pipe out or steam it out and make it work again.
Because that's exactly what I did, that sounds good, because I've incorporated a switch just above my sump pump that if it's twenty below zero.
You flip it over and set it up.
I can flip it over and do it under my yard.
Right, well, a lot of times it's pipe it out and then what they do is they put a gooseneck on it. So when it comes out, if this pipe's plugged, it's just gonna go back out the gooseneck.
If that freezes, it's froze out at the drain, much farther out, yeah.
Probably out farther, right. There are specifics to doing that because you always wanna hook it in with a three inch pipe. And that's because anything less than that will freeze typically.
And probably you wanna connect it far enough underground so it's below frost.
Well, yeah, but some of your storm drains aren't gonna be that deep, especially if they're at the end of the line.
Yeah, I couldn't do that either, I would have liked to, but.
You're probably lucky if you're eighteen inches below ground.
I'd have had it buried in water, I'd have put it down that far.
Um, there's a lot to it, but yes, there are a lot of benefits, not just from a safety standpoint where you're not responsible for having to maintain those sidewalks and stuff that way because they are your sidewalks and you do have a certain amount of liability for them. And then you got your residents dump the water out there, it's freezing, that's just a main tenet, okay? Besides a thing, it's a tear problem, tears up the roads, it's on its own for.
Please bring that.
Well, I think we're digressing though.
Okay.
Well, that's, no, that's our discussion item, that is what we're discussing.
If this has been on the table before.
Rick. Here and there touched on between different.
Here and there, no. So has it been looked up before and anything been done or has it just been?
I don't think he's building no.
No, it's not.
Well, I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, that's the type in here.
Has it been leaking since I moved in here?
When I was on council years ago, we never, we never talked about it. So it was never talked on it.
But you, Bill, you'll, you'll.
I'll take those more notes right away, if there is, then it's an easy thing.
Time to network.
Right, but if, I think there's a different way they could hook it up though, because you'll see when you see it, you're gonna be like. I think there's a different way they could hook it up if there's not an ordinance to mandate. I still, I think they could hook it up to help the sidewalk situation. But you'll see when we look at it.
And you said the house is being sold.
I don't think so, but.
You don't think, I think there's a way they could.
But I don't think there's any, any answer to that one other than bringing it out the front.
Okay.
It runs downhill no matter where you go.
But I know that that's.
How about the, but.
So then, somebody's actually gonna live in the house, maybe?
Are we on CIP or?
Maybe?
We're in CIP, we're in discussion.
Oh, okay.
We're on CIP.
Yeah, it's on CIP. There's a lot next to, couldn't go out that way.
And somebody else's property.
No.
Do we have anything else to talk about with the?
On the CIP, I mean, I understand it and I would, I thought I was really gonna enjoy working on a master plan, but now it makes me nervous of working on the CIP, but the, uh, don't we need to really wait until we get a manager before we start changing or adding anything to it or?
Well, I think this is a capital improvement plan, part of the planning commission's designated responsibilities by law.
Yes, yes, but clearly though, your manager should have a grip on what needs to happen over the short term as well as the long term. But yeah, capital improvement plan should piggyback and run with the master.
Master plan.
Right, but I don't, I can't believe that, I mean, I know I'm not up to speed on everything that's needed in the village for money wise, I mean, there's, there's different projects that I, that I'm aware of, but there's things that the manager should be putting together, uh, equipment.
Actually, to be honest with you, I think that we probably could invite Bill to a meeting and he could probably cover all those topics because he's the one who puts that together for the manager.
Right, yeah.
Well, he hasn't changed much since the last.
Um, I was gonna say, Bill, yeah, Bill completed it through the end of May.
Yeah.
The year ended in July, it's complete.
Okay, Bob, I'm sorry, Bob.
The new one will then start and there's.
We worry about that.
Yeah, Bob.
We're okay for a couple.
If I may add, the lack of a manager shouldn't cause a big pickup of the CIP, that's the point of the CIP. Capital improvement plan gives you a short term, which is a one to five year and then you should have a five to ten year and then you should have way out there. So that if you have big projects, say you brought the Crossman Park Drain, it's just gonna be a hundred grand. Okay, that, that's probably more in the realm of the five to ten year because you're gonna have to figure out how to pay for that or you're gonna.
That's the, that's a thirty sixty day plan.
Why don't we get a pocketful of money because it'll cost you a hundred grand.
We do. We don't have an option, today's July, so.
The thing is, we have X amount of dollars to spend on products per year towards road movements and things like that.
Matter of fact, it's tomorrow.
Right.
So we got our budgetary line items and what we have to match up those line items.
That's what I'm saying. The lack of a manager shouldn't, even if you went six months without a manager, shouldn't pick up. The capital improvement plan is sure already be in place for that. Now, will it take a little bit to play catch up when you get a manager? Yeah, why? But it really shouldn't affect you overall unless you have a lawsuit or something that's causing certain things to happen.
Well, like the Crossman Park issue, that's why they need it.
I haven't heard a lot about that, but I've heard a little bit, but you know, if that's.
But we need the DPW telling us what, I mean, it's typically what's the part is, we need the DPW. I mean, they've gotta have thoughts and plans of what they, what they know.
To be honest with you, from my experiences as part of the community, I'd say that we didn't really even have any real.
For what?
Anything.
CIP. Well, they've already discussed it with the manager, that he's brought it forward. So at this point, that's, I mean, we have what we have what it looks like to work with currently.
I don't think we really had a real CIP plan prior to Bill getting here anyways. So the whole process in part, in my head at least, is that Bob can help with a, a assessment of the roads and the condition of the infrastructure in the town and the buildings and things like that. He can help with an equipment, asset management plan for the equipment and stuff like that. And then looking at the roads, there's, there's things that you look at that. Now, that partly would also play with our streets committee on the council. You have to get their input on the road projects and which ones are prioritized. And then, once you have a list of projects and the priorities, you have X amount of dollars, you got Y project, you just start allocating money to the projects each year until you're, you say, okay, these are the ones you can accomplish year one, these we can do.
Yes, you did.
Bill put together a list of those priorities?
We had that in our.
One of those that were way back.
Yeah.
That said we were gonna wait until the master plan was done.
Yeah.
So it's kind of a one, three, five vision right now.
Because the master plan.
So we're getting close to having the master plan done then.
Which this meeting will be a good time to see what we would like to include on the CIP. That's, we're kind of all together.
So CIP, we're not gonna actually review it now because we've done that in the last few meetings. So just, anybody have anything else to add about CIP?
Could you email me the?
Capital improvement.
I do not.
It's been so long that I've looked at.
Just a suspension.
Okay, okay.
Great, what's next?
No, it's the same, it's the same one that Bill's had on last time, right?
Yep.
Okay, I, I might, for that plan, I might play around with some formatting so I can do some formatting where you can do sorting by columns and stuff like that, which will make it a little easier to be able to say, hey, what are all the plan, what are all the things for this year or that year, that year, in the Excel spreadsheet? It's very simple.
Well, I know, I could do it, but if you wanna do it, you go right ahead.
Yeah. Obviously has a vision, right?
It'd be nice if you, if we had some way to like take those items and link them directly on the one, you know, annual, you know, each annual page. Say, okay, here's for this year, this year, this year and have them.
You can, put it in Access.
Could do that too, but.
Could you just send me one?
Way to go, Bob, throw it all in, grab those queries.
Yeah, some of our guys that work are using Pivot Table and everything else, I'm like, no, I'm not gonna start pulling out kind of stuff like that, but.
So are we on discussion?
We should be on discussion, I had to say, we're done with the CIP.
So our discussion items were South Street and Drain.
And I thought we were done with the CIP. But then it started coming back.
And I have, I have one more.
People, all discussion about drains.
Are we done with that?
We done with CIP.
Are we done with it?
Last, last, okay, go. Any discussion items that anybody has?
Well, that's where South Street went and then the drain for the process going down there.
And then I, I have one more, I just.
So are we talking about South Street? The South, Church Street, why do I keep saying Church?
Church, Church Street, corner of Church and Mill.
I don't know, we keep saying that.
Church Street.
I do that.
I was gonna ask, what's going on?
Nothing, I'm in my own.
I just wanted to ask, is, do we think we will be getting a village manager soon?
Yes, I was gonna ask that too.
We don't, don't tell me.
Do we have any prospects at this point?
Yes.
We had prospects, other, I think we had four reasonable interviews. Out of that, we picked two to come back, only one of them came back. That person unfortunately did not fare as well in the full council interview as they did during the personnel committee. So I think they are not.
Being looked at.
Being considered now. Uh, we looked at a second person, but I really don't know how the rest of the council feels about that person and they've asked for more time to post the notice and.
And interview the other person.
So we're reposting potentially some of it.
Okay, so we're back to reposting it, okay, all right.
But we did put a shorter timeframe on the reposting, I think it's until mid-July, was it?
July twelve, probably.
July twelve, yeah, so we, we put a shorter timeframe on the reposting because we do want to come to some conclusion sooner rather than later.
Who's on the personnel committee?
Tanya, me and unknown, which I guess we will be talking about that next week. Tanya, me, and unknown, which I guess we will be catching up about that next week.
So you have to pick a third person, is that what you're saying?
No.
Well, Tanya has to select an appointment.
No, we do not. We do not.
No, you do not, no, you do not. It's up to three people, meaning up to. It is not mandatory to have three on your personnel.
Yes.
So you guys are it. I say go with it and get this done.
I'm only saying that the decision about appointing a third person is up to the village president, Tanya, according to.
Appoint you. Correct.
Like a approval of.
Right, but you do not have to appoint a third person if you council want to give us a.
But the council can't approve anybody unless Tanya makes an appointment for it. Correct, Tanya?
Can you do that another?
Tanya, my correct. The council cannot approve anybody unless you appoint somebody first and then they can.
Correct, appointment and then approval, correct, and then.
Just like the president and Supreme Court.
Okay.
Okay, Liz has something. Liz?
We have these fabulous Oakland County directories. Bob, you might want one of these for the BGYA. Everybody from the village council got one. Our logo is on the front.
Oh.
I have two available if anybody wants one.
What do they, what do they have in them?
Okay.
Uh, it's got all of the staffing for all of the municipalities in Oakland County, so if you wanna know.
You can get it at the public library.
Yeah, if you wanna know who is the clerk of Troy, it's in there.
It also has all the departments within the county organization and so.
Two bands, doesn't that would call them too?
Oh, I thought it was a discussion item.
Well, we live in Oakland.
I know.
Okay.
I just wanted to mention that when we were at the main event, which is where Main Street Oakland County recognizes communities and stuff, Ortonville got an award, which is night out. That was really nice being there and getting recognized for that.
Yes, they did.
That was so cool. That was fun.
Absolutely.
I can't wait to hear it.
It is a great event. Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, I'm definitely.
So the next item that I was thinking of, we kind of discussed the drain issue. Um, just to make note, we do have some residents that are very unhappy that that has been an ongoing issue year after year after year. Um, and I personally apologize for that. Um, I think council is now taking that a little more serious because we have an issue on the Church Street end of the drain, we also have an issue on the Cedar Street end of the drain. So now that this is coming full circle, I think they're realizing the importance of that. Um, so just to make you guys aware, uh, the county has come out and we kind of had a discussion on Friday. Our engineers have given a draft, they're gonna meet with the engineers at the Cedar Street House, um, because they're needing to put in their septic eight weeks ago, um, limited on, you know, laundry, dishes, showers, things like that for weeks. So, yes, very uncomfortable and very unfortunate. So, um, getting the engineers to talk together, um, finding the best route, finding the best way, and that's why we don't have an option to wait on that. Um, we're flooding the Church Street septics. So, you know, if we have to replace those at thirty grand a pop, it's gonna cost the village way more than a hundred grand. Um, because we are constantly flooding every time it rains, their yards with the park. So, working that down, on down to Mary Ellen's. Mary Ellen's has been repaired by the DPW numerous times, it has not stopped, it continues to leach. They just, both ends of that park, yes, are fabulous.
Where and what and this.
Yeah.
What address is that?
Uh, she's next to Jane, she's in the corner.
The medical building in the blue building?
Okay, yeah, we were hanging out with her Friday too and, you know, she just said, wouldn't it, the guys will snake it, clean it, drain it, DPW will come and it'll work for a little while, but. So, you know, obviously, you know, creek here, I'm sorry, park here, creek here, life, but, um, it's very important and we need to do that. And so I just wanted to let you guys know that, um, it'll be a mess when they're working on it. But no answer, should I?
Probably be at the same time that, um, Congress is under construction.
Right. All at the same time.
And September fest, yeah.
The rest of Michigan is under construction, we want to keep up.
Well, there you go. Takes me an hour and twenty minutes to get home from work.
I sat in front of my work in the same block for fifty-five minutes.
I am so sorry.
People were parking in the hotel and walking across the street in suits where they needed to be, to the place they're building.
Oh, gosh.
Fifty-five minutes. I kept calling my boss, oh, they'll be right, they'll be right.
I'm glad I worked five minutes from home.
I'm jealous.
Well, I was two minutes from work for fifty-five minutes.
Wow.
That's great. Anyway, September.
Care, are there any other discussion items that anybody wants to bring up?
Everybody have a happy Fourth of July and see you.
You too.
I would like to say that it's, you know, it's nice to have Bill here to give us some input on things that we don't know much about when they come up. And, you know, we used to have you at our meetings a lot. And it's kind of been, in that regard, kind of dry lately.
I gotta step back, you guys are working on the master plan and that is really the village's issue, it's not mine necessarily. I mean, I could have input, but you were paying a planner to help you out.
Well, hopefully.
As that, as that comes to more of a clones, um, I'm maybe attending more of your sessions as, as need.
Yeah, it's hopefully when we turn to the next phase of that, which once the master plan's approved, reviewing our zoning ordinances and see if they need to be adjusted. That's when we probably will rely more heavily on your input.
My suggestion would be, I have numerous suggestions. When you get your master plan, find, sign, seal, deliver things that probably need to be addressed and that would be more in the zoning ordinance and your zoning map. And if you have properties that aren't matching your master plan work, then I'm getting notice to where they do, so that.
And I know we there, we have raised the topic about going towards form-based as opposed to use-based and so on, which I think makes more sense for trying to maintain the character of the village because appearance really is more important than what you're doing in that building.
And, you know, to do that, I just was starting to get her ear, when Matt brought up the fact that, you know, you wanted the historic character, but yet you don't have, really don't have the tools in place to make that happen.
Yep, exactly.
You can suggest it till you're blue in the face, but if you have somebody come in here with an application, they go, no. I guess what you say is, okay.
We got hit by that by the one building that the hardware store, where they originally had all these, this building with all these nice windows and then when they built it, where'd the windows go? Well, we decided it was security risk, so we just took them all out.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And there was nothing we could do because it was use-based and they were using it with the same use that they intended, so we couldn't do anything about the change in form.
But Julie's helping to put windows back in.
Yeah, did you see the new vision for that one there?
Yes. No. I hope something's being done because it's just.
Oh, Julie. Well, it's, they, they stuck with the county.
He's got some issues because he's trying to divide it up into different pieces and we had numerous discussions with him about that.
Right.
You're talking about Julie's hardware?
The hardware, right.
Julie's.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
Um, he's got, he's gonna have to spend some money on it is what the issue is, he's trying not to, but you start dividing up spaces,
Surprise.
you have to have public facilities for people. And depending on how many people are in the building, depends on how many facilities you have to have. So, no, it's, it's a balancing act and he really needs to get a sharp architect.
And with no public buildings available. And with no public buildings available.
There you go, and you know what? If you had public ones that are within three hundred feet, you'd all have them.
And that is, I think that it was one of, that is one of the elements that's involved in our master plan, so when we get that through, we can take a look and see if that's.
Actually, the village of Franklin has put in, uh, public restaurants that are on timer based lives.
This is just her vision.
They do lock at eleven o'clock at night and they open again automatically, but something like in the morning, so they can't be used for other strange things other than what you're really intended it for.
It's cheaper, cheaper than hiring personnel to come and open them and close them.
Yep, and I'll tell you what, you can pull a magnet at a clock on the door and you're gonna get that door open. Might as well tear the door off or.
No, that's.
All right, all right, everybody.
Sorry, we're hiding over here.
Are we, um, done with discussions?
Cool.
Ooh.
All right, I'll entertain a, a motion to adjourn the meeting if no one else has anything.
Make a motion to adjourn?
All right, on favor.
Did you say?
Aye.
I, thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Brad.